All right.
We just started.
All right. All right, the time is six o'clock. I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the city of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. And council, we do have a time certain item, which is 6:30. We're going to be going into executive session. However, if we have agenda items that we can cover before then, then we'll go ahead and move those up in the agenda. You know, we'll certainly get through our consent items before we go into executive session. But once we reach 6:30, we're going to go there because we're meeting with the TML lawyer at 6:30 over Zoom. All right. So with that, we're going to start with agenda number two, which is public comments. If anybody wishes to speak, step up to the podium and state your name and address the council.
Because words are free. When the knock on the door comes, I represent the Military Discounted House of Prayer. My name is Daniel Horrigan at Fort Horrigan here along the Western Front. First thing I remember was my God-based faith. Then I learned of the human condition early on. I had to raise my cross and shouldered it uphill after many years of humiliation, abuses, and assaults. All forms of molestation on the good name of Horrigan, that is spelt H-O-R-R-I-G-A-N, a native to the area. And this attack took place in public before the town hall and the neighbors on all sides. Shouldering responsibility provides character made noble with selflessness to provide life with meaning. The core of the military enterprise, to be a community, one must sacrifice immediate gratification. And if you're not practicing this, you're lost. You failed. Practice this. Marshal your forces. This is not universal law to argue to no end for a glorified activist organization. And if you don't care about censorship allowing this to continue, the structure of your SOP within your job description, I'll fall back on the clergy and the Bible. And you can refer to how many laws it took to get this far, that they were changed, altered, fabricated, or ignored with great articulation. It's no longer important to be loud. This obnoxious shakedown yields nothing between the two mentioned in my previous dialogue. Well, it created its own noise disrupting sections within single-family style of living. The very laws written to protect the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost from an $18 billion industry to a healing and wellness center. Well, I got involved, and when I did, Delbert McKenzie was paying number one pillows tax at the local tax office, regardless of bird signs or animal calls. You swore an oath. You were on the clock. I was at home retired with faith in my word of God. To be divine and to die within oneself was a sacrificing of my business, my home. My consciousness chooses me to suffer to the extent of letting go. I will rebuild and build the church up. I'm not asking, nor am I telling you to help. It is required as you work for me and my government. You take the initiatives, check yourselves. By letting go, I can spend more time doing the things I love, providing myself passion. That feeds my interest in civility. What happened to, if it looks suspicious, call it in? I expect the four issues mentioned at the last council meeting, a neighborhood issue, and concern for all of civility and non-political association to bias outcome. This was a letter written by my neighbor concerned about his neighbor. This is written by Charles Goyette, February 6, 2020. It says, please answer why the handicapped parking spot at One Pillow Road is not in place for a church and a wellness facility. Okay, well, we never got an answer. It was never on the agenda. City planning is careless on public safety. I will say that out loud. This Military Discounted House of Prayer will need to be granted a handicap parking spot of its own. If I'm not sure, I'll sure as hell feel handicapped by the time we have dealt with this. So then here in the Bible, if I have any time left within four minutes of scripture, is my scripture time's over? Is my four minutes over?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Brunner. Y'all have a wonderful evening.
If anybody else wishes to speak at this time, please step up to the podium. All right. We are going to move on to agenda number three, which is council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. If we have a motion for approval items or approving items on consent. Councilor Rosenbaum?
I move to approve on consent, agenda item number five, work session and council meeting.
Oh, five is item number six is when we have the consent items.
Sorry, six.
Okay.
Seven, eight, and 11.
Eleven. Does anybody want to pull one of those items? Councilor Johnson?
Pull 11.
Pull 11? Okay.
I'm sorry, Morgan?
Six, seven, eight, and 11. You pulled 11, so it's just six, seven, eight.
I got a question on seven.
Okay, let's pull that one too. Any other items that we wish to pull? Is there a second for the motion to approve on consent? Item number six and eight. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. All right, we approved on consent, item number six. Approval of the minutes from the May 7th, 2024 regular meeting and work session. And item number eight, approval of a request for bid for pricing per cubic yard of ready-mixed concrete. And council, since we do have a little bit over 20 minutes before our time certain item, I'd like to go ahead and proceed with bringing up several of the other agenda items as much as we can get through, beginning with item number seven. And Councilor Johnson, this is one that you had a question on, I believe.
Sure, you did.
I did too.
Oh, I'm sorry, you guys do. Okay.
Yeah. Do we want to do the whole, should I just ask a question?
You can go ahead and ask the question. I think that's, yeah, for these consent items, I'm okay to just do that.
It's a, it's a little kind of pedantic or whatever, but why is SMART in all capital letters? I'd never found it to be an acronym for anything.
I don't know.
Probably came out of P and E.
It just, yeah, it's just what they're called. They're just smart irrigation controllers. It's not an acronym as I, as far as I know for anything.
Can we call them something else? I mean, like, I know it's kind of silly, but it elevates them to a place where they're extra special, but it doesn't even stand for anything. And they're just like.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. They're just, I think they're just referred to as smart irrigation controllers. So I.
And they always refer to them with the capital letters?
I mean, we can, I don't know. That's a good question. I'm.
I just.
Most of them, like, it's ratio smart sprinkler, ratio smart rainbird. Their orbit might, I mean.
Yeah, I don't want to be opinionate. Well, no, I guess I do, but like, the, when I saw that SMART didn't stand for it, and I'm a pretty techie guy, and then I just kind of like rolled my eyes.
I mean, we can definitely take and, you know, make it lowercase, but I mean, they are, most of them have the word SMART in their title, like, there's a wise version of it. There's a rainbird, and it's why smart sprinkler controller.
Okay.
Rainbird.
Maybe we just go, let's just go title case.
Okay.
All right, sorry.
All right, so, person. I think Councilor Medikus and then Councilor Rosenbaum.
Yeah, I just had a question. Under the landscape watering thing, there's a, one section, it's like a dollar sign and 50 yards.
Yes, we fixed that. It's $50 for a minimum of two cubic yards.
Okay.
So that's been fixed.
Thank you.
$50 for two cubic yards.
Yes.
And Councilor Rosenbaum?
Yes. Smart irrigation controllers do not water the yard when it rains. I'm a smart irrigation controller. When it rains, I turn off my controller. Will we, as residents, be fined if someone reports us and we turn on our controller on Thursday and it rains on Wednesday, which is our watering day, or Sunday? So if we're putting, if we're giving rebates for a smart irrigation controller, it's automatically allowing the irrigation controller to decide not to water.
So generally, if it's, if it's rained on your watering day.
Yes.
It probably doesn't need to water again until the next time, the next time in the cycle, which would be, if you're on a once a week watering schedule, then it's, if it rained on your watering day, then it shouldn't go back and raining and water again that same week. You should still only have that. That should count as your watering day, basically.
Depends on how much rain you get.
So, and, yeah, it will just depend. And some of these have soil moisture sensors and different things in them that also help determine how much water is released. So.
Austin allows you to water on a day other than your watering day if you turn off your water control system on the day it rains.
And if that's something, yeah, and if Austin allows that, then we have to follow Austin's regulations, and that's what we would do.
Any other questions about this item? Actually, I did have a question because I noticed this when you were bringing it up. I forgot to look at the, forgot to send this out. But if you go to the water conservation rebates section, no, I'm sorry, scroll up. It's the Water Wise. Water Conservation Landscape Rebates. I thought the, the amount there that we had moved to was not 6,000, was it? Yeah, it's supposed to be 10,000, right? That's what we adopted. Okay. So I think we need to correct that as well before. Yeah. It's right on the website, yeah. Any other questions on this item or corrections? Councilor Rosenbaum?
I move to approve agenda item number seven.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we approved the, um, number seven. Let's keep moving on, council. We have agenda item number nine, and we probably have time for starting this discussion. We'll see if we can get through it. Otherwise, we will pause and table it until we return from executive session. So item number nine, consider an act on approval of a task order amendment for Men Collaborative for the City Hall Backyard Project and approval of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget. This would be budget amendment number 10 if it passes, for $27,615. And we're going to start with an introduction by staff on this item to walk us through the proposed task order.
So this is a proposed amendment to the task order for the City Hall backyard. And this is to complete all the construction documents for that project and to also do some surveying on, for that area back there as well, so that they can complete those documents. This is an ad services for men. It's 19,115. The cost of surveying, right here, we have the 8,500. That is the total cost that I got from a vendor last week, but I can actually lower that to about four, I take about $4,000 off of that, and we should be able to do that survey for about half the cost, basically, of what we had before. So that would bring it to 23,615 for the total. So that, this would get us through construction, through the construction documents and everything for City Hall Backyard to move this project forward. The project's a little bit with the fire pit and things, or Mend was just worried that they wanted to make sure they had enough time in the contract to make sure they can deliver what the city is looking for in that project. So that is why we have this amendment to the task order.
All right, let's start with council questions. Councilor Johnson, did you, I think you mentioned that, oh, no, I'm, did you have a question on this one?
Yeah, I did respond on this one. So I was taking notes right at the end there, so I apologize if I asked something that you already addressed here. But, um, so I really like Mend, and I liked that presentation, and I'm excited for it. But how much, how much have we already paid Mend on that backyard project?
24,000.
24,000.
Yeah.
And that was like, uh, the outreach and putting together the designs and the presentation, everything like that, going to the meetings, something like that?
Yeah.
Okay. And the next amount of money that we're trying to get, or that we are asking for, is how much?
19,115.
Okay. And that is for schematics, you said?
Construction documentation, to get us to basically everything we need to do to construct everything back there.
When did we, when did we approve the original amount? Or was that just like part of the big?
October, yeah.
Did we know at that point that, did we only ask for enough money to get through the first part because we didn't know how it would go?
No, we asked for, there was 40,000 in, in that project for that item. But I think the scope of the project is kind of, I guess you could say, a little bit larger, a little more defined once they got through everything with the schematic design. And so they think it's going to, they just want to make sure that they can get through the whole construction document phase for the project.
Okay. How did it get so much larger? Was that?
I think it's just more intricate with like the fire pit that was really popular and some other things that came out of the schematic design process. What was that? Shade sales, all of that kind of stuff that was on there, so.
And those suggestions, I tried to, I kind of like peruse stuff, but I tried to, I know it sounds dumb, but like, stay out of like the community outreach sometimes because it's like, let everyone else figure out what they want, and then I'll get a vote up here and, I don't know. I am one of those people that really should be kind of one of the votes in there. But did all of those things come out of community feedback?
Yeah.
Like they said that they wanted a fire pit?
And the committees.
And the committees?
Committees and everything, yeah.
Okay. I, it's just, things never seem to go down. Well, you said the, the.
The surveying.
The survey is going to go down.
So I was waiting for the other quotes to come in. The survey has gone down.
Okay.
Yeah, the first one was really high, and that was 8,500, so.
Does it, does it seem to anyone else like the money that Mend is asking for is a little high also? Like a lot more? No? Okay. Also, how many more properties need to be surveyed in the city? Because we know that we don't have.
At, anytime we do any kind of documentation, anything like that, we probably will have to have surveys for some of that.
At four to five, at four to $9,000 per property, like, is this something that we can train our staff in-house to do?
Uh, I think that, that's, that's going to be a lot of training and a lot of work to make that happen. I mean, nothing's impossible.
Yeah. I just, every time we have to pay surveyors, and it's thousands of dollars for how many days of work?
Just depends on the process. Probably this one will be about three days of work.
Yeah.
And, and even a simple meets and bounds for a property for an easement is 1,200 bucks. Easy.
Yeah. That seems like something that, I don't know, we seem to spend a lot of money on. And even if we just, anytime.
A registered professional land surveyor licensed by the Texas Board of Professional Land Surveying for a year degree that includes 32 hours of accredited and two hours, two hours and two years of experience, I'd say.
I've, I've paid for surveys before, and they're way cheaper in Pennsylvania, but like, the, what you get out of it, sometimes you just look at it, and it's hard to, I'm a property developer, so like, I don't appreciate the full breadth of knowledge that goes into it. But sometimes you just look at this document and just say, what did I just pay for? I don't know. I don't know, it's just, I said I'm feeling frugal today, so I'm just annoyed to see so much more money being asked for. That's it.
Councilor Rosenbaum?
Councilmember Johnson, you are not alone. Every time we get an agenda, every other, there's another budget amendment, another budget amendment. I'm going, okay, we were a million over budget last year, and we set that money aside for a pro, for a major project, what's that, water conservation, and yet we're still going over budget, and we have to have a million dollars to pay for all these budget amendments, and thank goodness we have the money. So here's my question. 537,410 is what we're anticipating for construction. If we approve anything tonight, this is like final schematic design, this is complete design and construction documents. It's like saying, we're ready, we're going forward. We haven't even taken this to the residents. We took it to a committee, but a committee.
The resident.
It has gone to the residents.
It was a full presentation with the entire community invited. It was very well received. Lots of people were here.
I don't, wow. To me, it feels like a blurb and everything that we've been doing.
Yeah, no, it was definitely, it was a well-attended event here with the, yeah, and everybody was super excited by it.
I don't think I came to one of those meetings. I don't remember any of it. So 537,410, that's the final construction. Tonight, they're asking for additional 19,115 and survey 8,500. Shouldn't the city already have a survey for this piece of property?
I cannot find any, like, we have what came with the city facilities, but it doesn't have everything that's needed for this project. And, and, yeah, I could not find, and its company, I think we used to survey before, has been bought by another company.
And we have the 537,410 already in a, in the FY 2324 budget?
No, it's in our draft budget for next, next year. So it hasn't been approved by council. And also, just as a note, that's a placeholder. When it goes out for bid, there'll be changes based on construct, actual bids that we, we evaluate and potentially accept, although a lot of that work is going to be done in-house. So increases or changes in construction costs, but that's an estimate at this time.
Okay. What's the possibility of taking some of the items out of this project? Not everything Mend suggested has to be approved. So could we get Mend back and we onion skin some of this stuff away and go, okay, what can we get for, and give him a dollar amount? Boom.
I mean, yeah, I mean, that's of course always an option, but you're going to be cutting off large pieces probably of what kind of the project would be. For example, if you just said, we just want a playground, that's still about $200,000.
Okay, that saves 300,000.
Huh?
That saves 300,000.
But you still have to have an ADA path to that, so that's still money that has to be put into that.
Could hot funds be used for this project? Because people using the trails would stay around the city longer?
I think hot funds can be used for art, and, and that is part of the consideration. There's also some venue funds that will probably be part of the consideration. But a good majority of this is, you know, playground equipment and amenities that are not going to be something that would be hot fund eligible.
Thank you.
Mayor President?
I'm wondering if, unless my memory is failing me, we haven't like, as a council, approved this project yet. And I made the assumption that we would look at it and decide what parts of it we wanted to do, which is possibly everything that's in the, in the schematic. But I don't think we've had that discussion yet. So I have to wonder, I think doing the survey is fine, but are we a little premature in asking men to do construction documents until we've decided this is what the project is going to be?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's certainly an approach that we could take, which is not approve the construction documents until council has the chance to determine if they want to move forward the project. We could even do that as part of the budget if we wanted to delay that long, right? So where we're considering what projects to adopt, we could do it at that time, which means that we would potentially move forward as construction documentation and the actual construction cost in that budget. We could bring it back during the summertime to evaluate what council's feedback is for, for any desired elements of this, if we wanted to do so. And so those are all, you know, legitimate projects.
I'm asking a question, and I would love feedback from the rest of the council about what they think about this.
Sure. Councilor Medikus?
So I was here during the public engagement, and this room was full of people that were very engaged and very excited about this project.
Was I here?
I don't believe you were.
I don't know why I wasn't.
But I was. I do remember that I was here, and there were quite a few people from the different committees. Planning Environmental had a good representation. This, this idea, the schematic, has already gone to every single committee for feedback and been included. I thought at our last meeting, Mend was here presenting this schematic to council, and we gave feedback to staff, or did we just listen and not say anything? I think we gave feedback to move forward.
Right. We did have feedback at the last council meeting.
The other thing that I remember is, I think Councilmember Rosenbaum said we were a million dollars over budget last year, and we had surplus last year, if I remember correctly, right? And then we set aside some of that money for projects for our parks and open space. Didn't we set aside like a million dollars? That was one piece of it, or was it the year before? But we had set aside money for that time when we were able to actually move forward with some of these parks and open space projects, and.
Yeah, we, so in our, we had, right now, we have committed funds of $100,000 for parks and open space because we spent down for the Savannah project. That $100,000 in the draft budget is being proposed to be moved into construction or other open space, you know, projects. But that money is set aside currently in the current budget, right? So we have $100,000 of parks and open space committed funds.
So I don't know why it's, I just, I'm not sure why it's a surprise that this is a project that we're, we have in front of us, because.
I'm, I'm in favor of the project. I'm just asking, are, are we at a point where we think this is really what it's going to look like or not?
Councilor Johnson?
I'm, I'm in favor of the project as well, but it's just, it's almost like the word budget has lost all meaning. And so at what point does Mend or anyone, and again, this could have been any number of things, but this just hit me in the face when I was reading the, the material, and I'm like, yeah, of course, there are more money. Like, we need to sometimes ask these people to be the adults in the room and just be like, this is really expensive, and you guys are going to go over budget with everything you want. Like, I, and, I don't know, because, and also, so $40,000 was originally for just putting together ideas?
That was to get us to conceptual design, I believe, through construction documents. But again, the scope expanded.
So.
They need more money.
They have spent, they've already done work worth $26,561, right?
Right.
Yeah, and that was a, it's actually 24,000, so that was an error on my part, so.
Okay, so.
24,000 has been spent.
Remaining is, it says 13,4, but it's more like 15,4 or whatever.
Right.
Let's say 15. So if there's 15 grand left, they need 19 more, so that's 4,000 more, and then 8,500 maybe. So isn't that just, are we just asking for like 12 or 13,000 or more?
Yeah, so council, we can continue this discussion. I'd like to go ahead and table this item until we return from executive session, if I can get a motion to do that.
Uh, oh, sorry.
Motion to move into executive session?
Actually, can you motion to table the current item until we return from executive session, and then we'll take a motion?
Yes, that.
All right. Is there a second for that? All right, all those in favor, tabling the item until we return from executive session, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, and then I could use a motion to go into executive session.
Motion, will you move into executive session?
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're going to move into executive session at six twenty-nine. We will not take any action while we're in executive session, and any actions will be taken when we return from executive session in open council.
I'm glad it's white, because it stands out.
All right, all right, Council, we are returning to open session at 6:41 PM. There is no action required after executive session, so we can move back to our tabled item, item number nine, which is continuing the discussion. And I think Councilmember Johnson, you're asking for some clarification. And Carolyn, if you can provide just a kind of summary of your response to Councilmember Johnson's question, I think we followed up briefly too, but.
Yes, it was the, so it's, there's $40,000 currently in the, in the project. They have about, like we said, 15,000 remaining. This, they do not think they'll be able to finish everything and get everything done for the amount that's remaining that they have in the contract right now. So this would be in addition to that 40,000, this would be the 19,115 would be in addition to the 40,000 to do that. I mean, kind of going to what Councilmember Young was saying. This will take us through construction documents for the entire project. Now, when we go to budget the project, if the city decides we're going to, you know, build X, Y, and Z out of this project at this time, that is a decision that could be made out. The reason we were bringing this forward now is that this would give us basically construction documents to hit the ground running if council decided to fund the project in October, so that we could actually move forward with this project and start building this as soon as that, the new FY25 budget came around. So I don't know if that answered any of your questions and some.
Yeah, I actually realized how actually confused I was on the, so they need the rest of the 15,000 and then 19 more.
To get through the entire, so it's 69, so it's about that 15% of what is estimated.
Yeah, which, you know, makes the number square, but like makes the overage like that much more kind of hard to swallow because it's, I mean, we just need, we need people to be, you know, to look at it and say, this is the budget. So you tell us when it's, I have to do this for my job and, you know, sometimes the numbers aren't even this, this high. But if they think that they're going to go over 50% over the budget, then we need to get that feedback earlier than like, hey, cool stuff, right? Now it pays 50% more in order to get the actual documents that we need. And again, like this one in favor of the project, in the grand scheme of things, there's not much more money, but it's just every project seems to go over. And, and even when it's not just inflation or this or that, it's just like everything goes over. So, and I think three of the things, there was only two this week. But, um, okay, that was it.
Councilmember Rosengard.
There's a statement within their contract that I had a question on, and the reason I don't have it in front of me is because none of my highlighted notes transferred when I transferred them with the USB stick. It was something about nothing that they mentioned could be held against them, nothing that they, any quotes they gave us, and I can't find it for anything.
It was in your email, so it says, Men Collaborative assumes no responsibility for the accuracy of such information or services and shall not be liable for errors or omissions therein.
Thank you, exactly what I was looking for, yes. So I questioned that and I'm going, what? Do we want to accept this contract with something like that put in there?
Was that in the task order or was that in the, were you looking back at the contract that we approved?
If you look at the section that says exclusions to scope of services and additional services.
Is it under the task order amendment?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, on page 54 of our backup, item number nine.
And I think it's in reference to documents that are provided to them.
That's definitely in reference to documents we provide.
Not documents they produce.
They aren't assuming accuracy for anything that we provide that's in error. So if we, yeah.
Men Collaborative assumes no responsibility for the accuracy of such.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, it's the stuff they get from us. If we say there's no wastewater line on this side of the project, but it's actually on the other side, they're not going to take responsibility for that.
Okay.
Councilmember Rosengard.
I move to table this to the next council agenda. And I ask that if we need a survey, that we approve the survey tonight, but that everything else be tabled till the next council agenda, or next council meeting, sorry.
So let's, maybe the order of operations here is important. So you could, yeah, maybe the motion to approve the, the survey should come first and then we can bring back the rest of the items that the, or the, the construction document to subcontract, or the, you know, the amendment to the task order for mend, we can push that off till the next council meeting. But if you're willing to approve the survey, let's go ahead and have that be the motion and include in that, you know, bringing back the, the mend amendment as, for future consideration.
I move to approve the survey and I ask that we bring back the mend additional work on the next council meeting, if the agenda allows, depends on how busy you are.
No, we can, I think we got room on that, but I'll talk to the staff about, make sure that we can fit that. Is there a second for that motion to approve the survey?
Can we ask questions before?
Of course. Well, I'm sorry, there's a motion right now, so.
Well, yeah, but it's kind of.
We have to second it and then you can go into discussion.
And then we'll have time for discussion, yeah.
And second doesn't mean you approve.
Yeah, okay, I'll second just to ask.
All right, so that opens it up for discussion. The motion is to approve the survey and not, that motion does not include approving the amendment to the mend task orders, and now it opens up for discussion. Councilmember Johnson.
So how many, how much work do they think this is to get these documents together? Like weeks?
Yeah, I would think it'd be a couple months. I think it's about two weeks to do construct, two months to do construction documents.
Two months and I know it's fiscal year '25, but I feel like somewhere it mentioned start construction in 2025. Is that just start construction in fiscal year 2025?
FY25, yeah, fiscal year 25.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it should, it should be FY25.
When would be, if we were going to build this, when would be the best time to build it? Would it be more in the winter or would it be more in the spring or?
I think, I mean, ideally, we would start working in the fall and into the winter and stuff. And then hopefully, I mean, in a perfect world, we'd have it ready for springtime play, basically.
So if we were going to do it in FY25, it would be towards the front and maybe two months of construction documents wouldn't be ideal. But, you know, having to do two months of construction documents and then we start would kind of.
Yeah, it'd be, yeah, because that's putting us, I mean, smack into January probably for construction.
Okay, thank you.
However, delaying two weeks for the next council meeting, we still have time for, you know.
Sorry, when was the, when was the tabling until?
Till the next council meeting.
Okay.
If there's room on the agenda.
If, yeah, if there's room on the agenda.
I can be like the governor and call a special session. Councilmember Metcalf.
So I just have a question on the postponing it till the next meeting. Do we have instruction for staff on what information we'd want to have at that meeting to have a better idea of how we wanted to move forward rather than just saying we're going to put it on the next meeting? What do we want to make that decision?
For myself, I want to do more research and find out on Mend, their additional asking pri, asking of 19,115. I'd like to talk to them directly and get more information for myself.
Councilmember Burrow.
Yeah, I, one of the things I'd be interested in hearing, and I would support tabling to the next meeting, the, the main part of the agenda item, again, not, then to approve the, the survey now. What I'd, I guess what I'd like to hear, I'm compelled by Councilman Johnson's comment of, it seems, seems a little bit cart before the horse to approve the construction documents before the project has been approved. Maybe, maybe I need educating on that, but it just doesn't seem, it seems like we would approve the project before we would move forward with construction documents in that expense. I'm, I'm, I'm all for the project, I think it's a great idea, but I just wonder, it would be helpful to me, I guess, at the next, to the point for the next meeting, if some justification or rationale for moving forward with construction documents at this time prior to approving the project, but I think that'd be helpful to hear what that, what that argument would be.
Council, we'll do Mayor Portem Young and then Councilmember Johnson.
Just wanted to have a comment. So the Public Works Committee is going to meet this, their, this week, and they're going to be discussing CIP projects. Is this a project they could potentially, because it's, this is a CIP project, correct? So, you know, Public Works Committee will be reviewing the projects also at the June 4th meeting. I don't, Public Works Director didn't know if Mend was going to attend or not, but we'll also be bringing back Reimagine Brody Phase 1A, which is a consideration, you know, possible consideration for, you know, if and what parts we'll move forward with. We have collected committee feedback on that, so maybe next meeting would be a good meeting to kind of assess, you know, as we're really going into the budget season. Because, because the Public Works Committee, I mean, they're going to be, hopefully making their recommendations on what projects, you know, they're recommending to move forward.
So during that time before the next meeting, we would at least have a committee providing some feedback, but I agree, you know, in terms of why the timing is important. I think it kind of answers what the Public Works Director was saying regarding the ideal to construction time, the lead into that. And like you said, though, a formal approval of the project rather than just kind of approving the incremental portions, we can certainly, you know, put that forward as well. And part of that formal approval being we want to move forward with construction as the next step. So that may be another way that we can change the agenda to make sure it's, it's clear, you know, what we're doing, so. Mayor Portem.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but approval of this project is basically part of the budget cycle, right? That will happen in the budget cycle. Potentially, it happens before August. That gives us, if this is a two-month thing, August and September, potentially for the construction documents to be done. So I, I would like to see the project approved before we decide, you know, before we do the construction documents, if at all possible.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson.
That was, that's kind of what I was thinking, we.
We just got a presentation.
I feel like we bring it right up to the wire sometimes, don't we? Not, not, but, you know, we usually hit the mark, but it's usually like two weeks before the fiscal year starts, right? When did we approve it last year? Yeah, so we'd have to know pretty well that that was, yeah.
So, well, what I'm hearing, Council, is that, you know, this, there are steps we're willing to take now, which is one of these is getting a complete survey, right? Because we know that that might be useful for other projects or a limited reduction of what's been presented, right? So we need that as a baseline. And what I'm also hearing is that council wants to have a formalization of this as a project before we go into our budget cycle because of the timeline, potentially, right? Potentially that we need that before we go into budget cycle because the ideal timeframe may be such that we want to move ahead with the project, ahead of actually going to set aside money for it in next year's budget. And so I'll work with staff to bring back the, the formal reconsideration or consideration of this as a project so that we can get council's feedback and potential approval. And part of that approval would be, we are next, the next phase of this would be funding the completion of the construction documents in this fiscal year. And then as a budget, we would also have another opportunity to decide if we're going to move forward with the construction in fiscal year '25. That would be a separate decision, but, you know, hopefully characterized by whatever decisions we make with regards to formal approval. So that's my, that's the feedback I'm hearing and that's what I'd like to do for the next council meeting. And we'll, potentially give me other feedback too, but Councilmember Metcalf.
So I think it would be helpful too at the next meeting, because I understand some of this, we're looking at potentially doing in-house. So kind of like laying that out, like how much of this would we be doing in-house? What's the impact on staff? And kind of a timeline, so would we be trying to do it all at once? Would we be doing like it in phases? So, so more of that, like, okay, what happens when we have the construction documents? Walk us through that, just like an outline would be helpful.
And maintenance cost.
And the maintenance cost, yeah. I think there's some of that in the.
Yeah, they had an estimate in the, in the design when they presented that, along with the breakout between the different elements of the, the project. And I think we, I don't think it was necessarily identified, we talked about it, but we didn't identify specifically which portions in the, and we can do that though, but I think we did talk about it.
And we did just get, we got a presentation, but we really didn't take any action other than giving feedback.
Right.
So.
All right, any further discussion on the motion before I open up for the public feedback? All right, we'll entertain feedback or discussion from the, comments from members of the public at this time.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26 Rees. One of the things that I would like to see in terms of scope of work in engineering and design monies in general, is that especially when we're doing things like taking out a lot of stuff for staff, I'd like it to kind of be less under the supervision, more under the supervision of staff and less under the supervision of the design people who keep getting percentages off of it. And, and so when you, when you've scaled back your project, you know, say half, because we're taking it in half, taking it in-house, I think then you start hopefully narrowing down your, your engineering and design fees because you, you're moving the cost of the, of the percentage, because so many design fees are percentages. And I still believe, as I'm looking at numbers, that our design and engineering fees are high, you know, percentage of project. And the engineers, who know a lot more than I do, have told me this. And so I, I, and yes, when you have really small projects, you have higher percentages of design fees, but I just, I just feel like we used to have people who paid a lot more attention to that in finance than we have had lately. People have had less attention towards that than in the past. On Public Works, we have added, there was a time when we paid more attention to that. And I think people are old and tired, you know, the whole city's gotten sort of old and tired. And, and it's, it's a thing that seems to be falling by the wayside. And, and I, and I would like us to see, I appreciate people discussing it because I think these percentages matter and, and the add-ons matter. So I appreciate the discussion. I think we have good people. I think everybody has good heart. I just think we need to pay attention. And, and I, and I really do appreciate the idea of people designing the project and then watching the percentages and, and moving it forward. I regret that I'm out of town. I will, I will try to attend the Public Works meeting, but you never know what will happen when you're trying to get on the internet. So hopefully that will, that will work. And I, I do have concerns that we have a quorum because I can't take a certain member because I won't be here and I'm not sure that person's there anymore. Anyway, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, comments? All right, so the motion is to approve the, the budget amendment for the, the survey only. So this would, I think we're, are we approving the 8,500 or are we approving the 4,000? That's maybe a question we want to clarify. Okay, so this would be a budget amendment for $4,000 to make a survey that would be in support of the project?
Correct, we don't need a budget amendment for this.
Okay, so we're going to, so the, so Mend's going to essentially pause work at this point so that we can use the existing budget for this, or do we want to go ahead and increase it at this time?
Well, it's, it's below, we, we can find money in the department budget. I was going to, if I could just say it, I was going to suggest we pull, because it sounds like we're not moving forward with pickleball at the dam because.
The dam's going to be redone.
The dam's going to have to be redone, it was going to be $14,000 worth of grading work. So there's $10,000 that we're not using for that project, so pulling 4,000 from that to pay for the survey, for this area. So that would be my suggestion, and there's no council approval. Mayor, you can, because it's in the same, actually, I can approve that because it's in the same department.
Councilmember Johnson.
That got slipped in so quickly. All we wanted were lines painted on that dam to play pickleball. I, I am going to start directing everyone to City Hall to, to answer why we couldn't just have lines. I get that there's a part that gets water and then the water dries, it gets a little slippery. It kind of reminds me of these signs over, or these gates at, at the Burger Center that have a sign on them that say gate closed, which you would only be able to read when the gate is closed. And I don't know why they need a sign that, but it's like, if it's slippery, don't play. Every, like a child knows how to do this. Can we just paint some lines on there and just use the $10,000 and don't fix any leveling? Can we do that? Instead of moving the money around, like they just, we, we asked for lines on a hard surface for admittedly not that many pickleball players, but that was what we asked for in the budget last year. So before we do that.
What's in, how much is in the budget right now for?
$10,000.
So it would, certainly wouldn't take that full amount just to.
Just paint some lines.
Paint some lines, okay.
Right. So yes, we could, we could probably do that and still transfer $4,000 to this project.
Council, is that where people want to, to move with, forward with both the pickleball but also this other portion of the money that we need for the outdoors? So I'd like to hear your feedback before we move forward, so, Councilmember Metcalf.
So I would just, if we're going to just paint lines and not worry about how slick it can be and how dangerous it might be, that we have some kind of posting about our liability, you know, how do we cover ourselves?
We'll have to consult with the city attorney. I mean, city attorney, how do you feel about kind of an unofficial pickleball court? That has no, you know, yeah, that's played in a dam.
We're responsible for the condition of the court that the public uses, so if it's a known condition, that's a danger, then we could post that as or take some sort of precautions. We could potentially come up with the language for the, the signage that would provide coverage for the city. And so this is something that when we decided to use that facility, it was not known that this had a fault, you know, in this case, something that's recognized as a potential danger. However, there may be some signage that, or that we can put together that gives, you know, enough notice or warning that would reduce the exposure to the city. Okay, so we can work on that. Any other feedback? Okay, so it sounds like there's no budget amendment for this, it's just going to be the, the motion to approve. We should be able to reduce the, the cost of putting the lines and whatever signage, you know, for covering the cost of the survey. And so I'll make sure that staff and I, we don't need to bring that back to council or if we do, I'll make sure that council's notified about that. All those in favor of the motion to approve the survey, but, and bring back the, the projects at the next council meeting or the next appropriate council meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, thanks, Council, for the discussion on this. I think everybody, based on the feedback, is positive towards this project and I want to make sure that it is right-sized and something that the city is going to be proud of and that council feels comfortable moving forward. Personally, I'm very excited about the project. I want to see it implemented to some degree, hopefully very close to what we saw as the design that we got back from the community feedback process. But I also understand that, you know, budget can be a concern with regards to projects like this. But as a city, it's one of these kind of things that'll, you know, only improve and increase our, our residents' enjoyment and our, I think our attraction as a city itself, you know, to Councilmember Rosengard's point, there may be some value in that as well in terms of bringing more people outside the city to this area, so. All right, Council, we're going to move on to item number 10, which is Consider Act on an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget. This would be budget amendment number 10 now for $28,000 of additional funding for the Jones Road Southside sidewalk project. And we'll go ahead and have staff do an introduction to this item in terms of where we're at. And Council, if you recall, in the draft budget that we presented at our last council meeting, we had $50,000 set aside for this project in next year's budget. We pulled that money, so it's no longer in next year's budget. This would move the project into this year's budget and completed for the $28,000 that's being asked instead of the $50,000 that was being asked before. So that's just in terms of relative information, you know, where we were planning on doing this. Now staff believes they can get it done this fiscal year with a budget amendment and instead of having to set aside $50,000 next year. And hand it over to Public Works Director.
So as the mayor stated, this is originally when this was approved in FY24, this was kind of a planning only, but we would like to go ahead and move forward with constructing this small section of sidewalk that goes from Pillow Road to Lone Oak Trail. It'll connect nicely and with the trail and stuff work we'll be doing this year in front of the city facilities. So in order to do that, in order to complete the project, it would be about a $28,000 budget amendment that we're looking for. This would include the cost for, in addition to the 19,000 remains, and it would include the cost to build the sidewalk itself as well as, one of the residents has asked that a, you know, a new fence basically be put up, similar to work we've done in other projects along Jones Road to give them a little bit more privacy between the sidewalk and their, their home. So that would be part of that 28,000 would be also the construction of that fence. And we'd like to go ahead and move forward with this and construct that sidewalk to make a path from those streets all the way to City Hall, basically.
And I think it's noted in the backup that this would all be done in-house as far as the construction of the sidewalk.
Yeah, we'll have some temp labor we'll bring in because we have a couple guys who do incredible fence work that are very good, so we would have a little bit of temp labor with that, in that 28,000. But otherwise, everything else would be done in-house. And then there was, oh, and this project, I mean, we already have, we're completing the construction documents, but we also already have the TCEQ approval for the exception request on this, so it's ready to, as soon as we get hopefully concrete bids in, we would be able to go ahead and start doing this project.
Council, questions for staff or discussion on this item? Councilmember Johnson and then Councilmember Rosengard.
So the, the sidewalk that was put in from. So the sidewalk that was put in from Pillow to?
Westgate?
Well, not Westgate, I guess it went to Sunset Trail. But that goes in front of our house. And at that time, the city had to get a little bit more of an easement, because I think the original easement was only like four feet or something. And so, and a fence did go up there. We asked for a fence, Mrs. Lucas did not, I think Ruth already had one. But there already is a fence here. I like these guys, but they already have a fence, right? So I know it's a chain link fence and it's see-through. Just, how much of this twenty-eight thousand dollars is, it's mostly just materials? Because we're gonna?
Materials and a little bit of labor, so.
How much money are we thinking for?
For the fence?
Yeah.
Probably about twelve?
Twelve?
To build a fence?
It's a long stretch.
It's a long, it's a long stretch, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess that's not, that's about. It's only tangentially related, but like, how are you guys gonna go around the, there's a light pole, or, yeah, like a little light at the end of Pillow? And then the school, is it just gonna be completely set off? Because there does seem to be a big easement.
Yeah, it's gonna be, I mean, it's gonna be on the side of the road, similar to where it is in some other places. But it will be, you can have certain, I guess what you would say, obstructions that you can go around.
You can go down to thirty-two inches for two feet.
For a short period, yeah, for sidewalks. So they'll be in the sidewalk, basically.
Oh, okay.
So that is allowed, that is compliant.
Even that, that light is like right on the corner, so that's gonna be, that is like a kind of a tight?
Yeah, there's gonna be a little bit of, yeah, reconfiguration on that corner. And we'd also be, I think, especially with the concrete, once the concrete people are here, I think there's a repair on the opposite side of the street would be doing as well.
Oh, yeah, that's actually really bad right there. Yeah. I guess it's not so bad for the fence. But I did have a concern that that was gonna be like the majority of this money, at which point it'd be like, you already got a fence. But, okay.
Just a real quick follow-up on that. So does our easement, like, just talking about the narrowness there, replacing that fence would be able to push it back any further from where it's at currently, or is it just gonna go right where it's at? Our easement doesn't go further than that?
Yeah, I don't think we have much more there to move there in.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could get right to our easement when we rebuild it, just so we have as much room as possible.
Yeah, we'll make sure that we have pending, we're building it on the lines, basically.
Okay, great. Councilor Rosengard?
Regarding the fence, they have a chain link fence already. Chain link fences, you can get these plastic cups that go right into the holes of the chain link to fill it up and make it obscure. You can also get vinyl strips to pull through. Are we thinking of totally getting rid of that fence and putting in a privacy fence, wood fence?
It would be more of a privacy style kind of fence. Not a, I think they were pretty much similar to the fence that's down on the other side of Jones. Basically, the fence that's right over there.
Are we taking down that fence, or are they taking it down? And, because it's on their property.
We would probably be getting a temporary, we would get a temporary construction easement with them to put in the new fence, basically.
But it wouldn't be consistent with their other three sides of fence? They would have a wood privacy, would they consider just allowing us to do a wood privacy against their chain link?
I don't know, I don't think the demolition of the chain link fence is that expensive. It's pretty much a very small part of the project.
And then the other questions that I had, vinyl strips that can go through chain link fence to make them more obscure? And also there are little cups that you can pop right into?
Yeah, no, I'm familiar with the pudding cups, we've used them on the storage yard gate over here. And I'm familiar with the vinyl strips and stuff, we're gonna be using those on another little piece over here.
I don't know what the expense is with those versus a wood fence.
And so the problem is, I think, when you, especially on the pudding cups, the nice side kind of faces out. And then you have the backside, which is not as good-looking. So we would either have a not-good-looking side facing the public street, or they'd be facing into their property. I don't know how that would work. I'm not sure they are interested in those cups going in their fence.
Okay, next question, let's say they don't like the cups or they don't like the vinyl strips, and we do the wood fence. Who's maintaining it?
It's gonna be their fence at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Johnson?
It's a low fence also, I mean, putting anything in it isn't gonna add much privacy. I, it's such a bummer going down Jones, it's like everyone just has put up these like, as if it's terrible to look at, like what is across the street? So there's just like me and Mrs. Lucas who have no problem looking out. But what is the current easement? Is the fence?
I'm pretty sure the fence sits on the property lines.
Oh, okay, so it is much wider down here?
It is wider back there, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I was concerned that it was gonna be like an eight-foot fence, five feet off of the road.
And it'll still have to meet the corners and all that, we still have to do, make sure that that is all part of that as well.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions? Councilor Metticus?
Won't it be consistent with the one we already did in front of Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, that's I think what they were looking at, yeah.
Oh, so, and I know it's my fence, but I kind of like ours, you know, it's, 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 some of them are very tall, I think the maximum is eight feet, right?
Right.
And it just feels like very standoffish. But ours has slats that you could see through, it definitely provides privacy, but it's not as aggressive.
I think, yeah, I think it's gonna be of a similar base of design to that.
Not like a wall, like?
It's not a wall.
Pillow and Jones.
Yeah, okay.
Because I don't think they wanted that either, yeah.
As long as they have similar taste in mind, then I think we're.
They still need to display their oogie boogie man Christmas decorations.
They have the best Christmas decorations, that was one of the things I was worried about.
Mayor Breton?
I was gonna say, I think this is a good project. It's kind of an eyesore right now today, it's kind of an anomaly. And putting a sidewalk in there and making it look like everything else, I think improves the look of our city down what is essentially our main street leading into or leading from the, from the city facilities here. So I would like to make an emotion to approve the design, or excuse me, approve the budget amendment number ten to construct the Jones Road sidewalk.
Is there a second for that motion to open up for further discussion?
I'll second that.
Alright, that opens up further discussion. Let's go ahead and take comments from the public on this item.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Carolyn, I have a question here. Because I used to walk it, because I used to walk over here, but with the pandemic, I haven't been making this regular loop. The problem with walking over there was there used to be a very, this is not a front yard, this is really kind of a backyard in terms of how it used to be for that house. They usually use this, and people who had the house before, so their dog would rush the front. And so you wouldn't want to walk there, especially with a dog. And so I don't know if that's the same situation, it's not anymore?
I don't think so, no, I mean, I haven't seen, yeah.
Okay, because that?
They have one, but I don't think it's super reactive.
Well?
Is it?
Yeah, it was a super reactive dog that I would not walk there. So that's the reason I was in favor of the better fence.
Yeah, it's a nicer fence.
But you also kind of want to go five feet, depending on the size of the dog. I don't remember, I remember it was so reactive that I wouldn't walk there, and I will usually walk anywhere. And there's a fence there, so that's just, if you're gonna make it, it should be functional.
Yes.
And so, so it still functions for them as a backyard kind of dog situation?
Yes.
In my experience, as opposed to Rob's house, which is a front yard. I mean, Rob's dog isn't in that, isn't in that front yard.
Right.
And so we're not dealing with the same, we're not solving the same problem. And so, so that's what, and this is, and this is a school pathway. You know, it's a resident pathway, but it's also a school pathway. And a lot of people, especially the older people, who may not be doing it right now, but have been doing it and turning down that street into the street. That's my concern, is that we do have a lot of people sort of in wheelchairs. And probably that number's only gonna go up. And so I'm looking for that to be a safe pathway for the elderly.
Right.
And so I just think we need to, that we need to perhaps there consider five feet if we have, if we have a dog thing. Because it is, it did not feel, it did not feel far, like it felt too scary for me to go down. I will actually cross the street there, so I'm just, I'm just putting that as information. I don't know if it's accurate information, because I haven't done it in a while, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, council, before we vote on this motion? And just as a reminder, we are also gonna be constructing a trail in front of the Public Works Building, which will complete essentially the extension of the sidewalk so that people can, you know, walk on that side of the road and get to the city facilities and, you know, make that another access point rather than having to go across and then back across. You know, a little bit, a little bit harder. And that's gonna be something that will be done, done actually before we, it'll be started before that, because we're still waiting on the concrete bids for this project, so. I just wanted to quickly point out, thank you guys for the work on making the mural more accessible. Public Works is out there, last couple days, I think, you know, working on a path, you know, through the, the, you know, the flowers and the bushes over there, that you can actually go up to the mural now, rather than having to, you know, try to step through the grass, you know, through the plants and things like that, so very nice job, it looks really great.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Alright, this passes. And let's move on to agenda number eleven, which is the approval of purchase of a private water line from sixty-two eighteen Brody Lane for seventy-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-two cents, and a utility easement for fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty, fifty-four dollars and forty-eight cents for the Country White Lane Water Line Project. And I believe Councilmember Johnson, you pulled this one, do you want to go ahead and follow up with staff?
Sure. It starts off, it says, "As part of the water contract with the City of Austin, Sunset Valley is required to provide service to all individuals within the ETJ on Country White Lane." Do we currently do that?
No, but we're required to, Austin wants us to make sure to take them off of their service and put them onto Sunset Valley Service. It's part of our water contract for us to do that. We do not currently do it, but it is in our contract, we were supposed to do it last year.
Okay. And where's the meter, like where, so if we bought this, this water?
This water line goes from basically sixty-two eighteen Brody to, there's a fire hydrant at the end of Country White Lane. So that's kind of the end of that water line right there. So this is the first part of the water line then that we will construct going down Country White Lane. So this is the actual connection to the City of Austin line that we will be using.
Okay, so is there like a meter there?
We would be installing a new meter.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to, we have to put in a different meter, yeah.
Okay. Okay, got that. When was this water line constructed?
With the construction, when the barn, so I'd have to look, let me look real quick. It's a few years old, I can't remember exactly when it was constructed, but let me look and see if I can come up with that.
You know, we can?
It's about eight years old, I think, you know, kind of generally.
Yeah, it's not super old, yeah.
So, and Freeland Turk has determined that it needs to be replaced?
No, we're not replacing it.
Oh, okay.
We are purchasing the existing infrastructure, so we don't have to build new infrastructure.
Okay, and who are we, who are we purchasing it from?
Sixty-two eighteen Brody, they own the water line. Currently, it is a private water line.
Yeah.
And we are going to purchase the infrastructure from them to make it a public water line.
Okay, so we have to pay for the water line, and then we have to pay for the easement?
There, yes.
Okay. In the document, it says, I don't think I've ever, in the easement doc, it says, consideration is ten dollars?
So, okay, so yeah, that's kind of standard language across easements, so that it's better to negotiate future easements, basically, from that. So we're not saying exactly how much is paid for the easement.
It's legalese, you have to show some sort of consideration on the document, it doesn't have to represent the actual money paid.
Okay.
You have to show some exchange value.
Okay, I was gonna vote on that real quick.
We have, yeah, we have brought that number down significantly, there was a lot of, no, two thirteen. They wanted a lot more, so we've done a lot of behind-the-scenes negotiations with that.
Yeah, like an eighty-four percent reduction from what they asked for.
Yeah, that's, that's good. So, okay, so I kind of misread this document, what, from Freeland Turk, what are we, because it talked about?
We, so if we didn't have this water line, we didn't purchase it, we'd have to construct our own water line. And the cost of that would be much more than purchasing the existing water line. And so that's where there was some work done by Freeland Turk, but also just in terms of this, you know, the engineering feasibility of having this water line service to those customers in the status of the current water line. But because the negotiations were not being as productive or quick, and we wanted, and actually we had to pull this project from the last sequence of biz we did when we had the approval for the water line going to Leona, the, you know, the assessment property. We actually had to pull this because we didn't have a solution for bringing, you know, the next phase of this project, which is actually constructing the water line down Country White Lane. Freeland Turk was doing an assessment for us as part of this to say, if we couldn't purchase the easement, how would we actually build our own water line, and what would it, you know, probably cause?
So if you look at those numbers on that document right there?
Yeah.
The construction cost, if they were to build, when they would have built the water line, that's the estimate cost for construction, which was like eighty-four thousand something.
Yeah.
But then you take a depreciation value off of that for the number of years, and that's where you come up with the seventy-two thousand.
And so then we took this and went to real dope properties and said, hey, is this cool?
Yeah, that's the cost of the infrastructure.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that makes more sense.
But their lenders had to then approve?
Yeah.
That's where the easement money came in.
Okay, wow, my thinking on this has totally changed, okay, cool.
Councilor Brou.
Most all?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Most all homesites have easements on them already? Is this not applicable because this is an ETJ?
This had a, this, it's a private property, this property does not have, does not have an easement on it for this water line.
It was a private water line?
It's a private, yeah.
So there was no need for a?
An easement for a private water line.
Okay, so I'm gonna reword my question. When you are, when you have a lot in the ETJ, are those lots surveyed with easements? With the county, or are there no easements at all?
If it's not a platted lot, it wouldn't have necessarily easements on it.
Because it's in the county jurisdiction, City of Sunset Valley, only if we zone them, if we, yeah.
It would depend on if a private, piece of private property has some sort of county service being provided to it or another person is providing that service, they would have the easement on the property. Did that explain that to you?
Say that again.
So if you have a private home and say, I don't know, say there's a cable company that wants to run the line to the house?
Yep.
They would have to obtain an easement to use your property to have that line go into your house. In this case, since it's a private water line that they constructed their own, they never had to get an easement for their own property.
So basically, what I was asking is, the county and the city does not have an easement on this lot, period. So we have to buy an easement, that's the only reason they're asking.
Exactly, yes.
Right, yeah, okay, thank you.
Mayor Brou?
Thank you. The, just to make sure I understand correctly, this is the, what's on the table here now for approval is purchasing an existing water line, that's the one that runs along Brody Line? But also construction of new?
No, we're not constructing the new. No, this is just for the purchase of the existing water line, so that we can then, at a future point, release that Country White project for a bid, and then build the new, this new section of water line.
And so then, then in the quote that we saw that was posted up here just a moment ago, from the engineering company, all the bits and pieces of hardware, that's basically modifications to the existing line to make it?
That is the, what the cost of construction would have been for that existing line.
Oh, I see, so.
So, yeah, it has nothing to do with the new construction, sorry.
That's the value of the line.
That's the value of the line, okay. Okay, great, yeah, I was confused about that.
And just, this project, Country White Lane Water Line Project is a funded FY24 project, there's money in the CIP fund. And in fact, we will be drawing, you know, this purchase and the purchase for the water line and the easement will come out of those funds allocated to this project.
So, for example, so once this is done, and all the documents are signed and everything, we're waiting on one final easement from Lowe's. And then we will move forward with hopefully releasing this for bids for the future construction that would be done later. And we would bring that back to council at a later date.
Mayor Breton?
So just to make sure I understand this, this is, the money we're paying for this has already been budgeted as part of the County White?
Yes, it's part of that country. It's part of that Countrywide Waterline project, basically.
I wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Just, just always a cautionary element to this is that the budget we are drawing from is what we'll have remaining may not match what the construction price is, and there may be additional budget amendment or budget in the fiscal year '25 in order to match what the construction is. So we have an estimate in there and a placeholder, but that's just a, always like one of those things that we have to make sure we're aware of. Councilmember Rosengard.
I move to approve the water line from 6218 Brody Lane for an amount of 72,882.42 and an easement for 15,854.48.
There's a motion to the purchase of a private water line and the utility easement. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Any further discussion, council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, most passes. I'm glad that we actually got this the way that we originally planned for so that we can now move forward with the construction bids and providing service. And this, the project is also intended to include the Countrywide turnaround as part of the project as well, so it'll be a combination of both of those projects that are already funded. All right, so council, the next item is for discussion only. Staff has been working on an update to the salary survey and actually collecting a lot of data over the last several months from multiple cities. This is something that we talked about in February or January, I believe, in terms of approval of the list of cities to go forward with for comparison. And so I know staff has been working hard to provide this as a backup. This is not an action at this time. However, council's feedback will give guidance to myself and to staff as we move forward in the budget for any possible changes to staff positions as part of the budget for consideration. And so we'll hand it over to the city administrator for a walk through this, but this is intended to be a general conversation if you have questions, but we can also, you know, follow up with questions directly to staff after this discussion, so we're not taking action tonight. And also, please include me on those, those as well, so I know what council's thinking when we're talking about the, the budgets that we'll be putting together. So, with that, I'll hand it over to the city administrator for a walk.
Thank you, mayor. So, yes, it was back in January that city council approved the list of cities and you all provided some backup cities. We did, as staff began the research, we did remove the City of Balcony Heights. I discussed with Councilmember Rosengard and she asked why. The city's actually facing bankruptcy. They made a, there was an economic development deal. Long story, but essentially just given it, its tumultuous time is going through, we decided to remove that city and we chose to put instead the City of Lago Vista because that was one of the backup cities. The last time that a salary survey was conducted was in 2021. You know, we, the city tends to do these periodically, every, every, it's a range of how, how many years or in between each, each salary survey. But what I wanted to focus on with this particular salary survey is currently the city has a, it's called a traditional pay structure. It's a pay, pay scale that has 11 different grades. And, you know, many, in fact, many of the cities that we surveyed, they utilize this. I think this is, is a very common tool, however, and again, this hasn't been changed since the, the scale itself. I believe at one time the city had like 20 grades and so in 2022 or maybe prior to 2022, it was reduced to the 11 grades that we have now. However, it's not been adopt, changed since 2022, although there were changes to job descriptions last year where some of the jobs moved up a grade. But as you can see there, all the highlighted positions are now making higher than what's, than the maximum point of the grade. So, in discussing with the mayor of, you know, possible remedies to this, just given the, the few number of positions we have overall, it's, we're looking at 16 positions where we would make an individual range per position rather than trying to assign it to a grade. So, for example, I sent you all the job descriptions. So this is the administrative assistant that's split between Public Works and Admin. Their pay grade four. My proposal is, and to work with the mayor is to bring back as a part of the adoption of the FY25 budget is, instead of this pay grade four, it would say pay range and then it would have a low amount and a high amount. So, 16 positions would have, and these are the non-step, non-contractual positions. The step positions are police officers, patrol sergeants, and the detective sergeant. They would remain on the step program because, you know, that's, that, you know, that's very, very different than a lot of other positions in the city. And then the city administrator position is a contractual position where that salary is, is set and negotiated by council and the mayor. So, that's really the, that's really the, the goal of this salary survey is to inform creation of pay ranges per position rather than using the traditional pay structure that the city has been using. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or get your, get council's feedback. The mayor and I would like your feedback, yes, like you said, on in moving forward with the budget. As part of the budget process, this was in the presentation and we'll be taking this to budget finance, there will be a salary adjustment pool and that pool will be a percentage and part of that pool can be, could be a COLA, right, increase across, across all positions, but then some positions may, as we examine this, look at the data, look at the new ranges, some positions may need a, a market adjustment based on the salary survey and the new pay ranges, so.
Yeah, and I'll just, my own comments are, in discussions with Matt, because what happens is that we, we can get out of sync with certain positions and we want a little bit more flexibility in terms of, say, we have a salary survey that says our administrative assistant position is not, is compensated as, as compared to our peers, right? Well, we had to then change the pay grade, which might not be the exact fit for what we want, so giving ourselves a range gives us more flexibility for modifying individual positions rather than modifying pay grades. And we're out of sync with pay grades anyway. This is actually modeled, or the first we're proposing is how it works at University of Texas and state institutions, so we have the by-position pay ranges rather than pay grades. I think both approaches are, are used, right? You know, like Matt said, in some cities they use what we currently have, others, institutions like the states, you know, uses this, this range. But I think it allows us to be more responsive to specific role changes rather than having to then match it to a pay grade where they may make other pay grade positions out of alignment and trying to keep that up is a little bit more challenging. So, that's, that's a recommendation I, I had in working with Matt. The rest of the information is really, you know, for council's information in terms of the current status of where cities are with these positions. The thing I would note that's important is that it's very difficult to get a one-to-one match, you know, for the positions that we have in our cities since we are a small city, but we also have more services in many cases than some of the larger cities, particularly around utility support where, you know, some of these cities contract out utilities, some of them, you know, have a separate parks department, some of them, you know, have, have multiple sort of, you know, we have a lot of overlap because we, we have a small city, but we also, you know, try to provide a broad range of services. And I think that's just something that, as you're looking through this, when you see titles, just understand that that's, there's information behind that, that sometimes those titles don't necessarily reflect the full responsibilities like, like our city would or our city might have, you know, different responsibilities in some sense, so.
And to refer to the, the city profile, right? So, that, that has a lot of information that the mayor's talking about. In particular, I think it's important to look at the total acres of parks and green space managed by the city and what infrastructure is managed by the city, so.
Councilor Johnson.
So what does STEP stand for?
STEP is
Yeah.
STEP, is that, is it, sorry, are you mad that I'm capitalizing it?
Well, no, I was just, I, I saw it and I was like, I gotta ask.
Don't we, don't we normally capitalize STEP?
Step.
Or is it just?
Yeah.
I don't know. Sorry. You really don't like all caps, dude.
Well, if it stands for something, but it just makes you, it's like, oh, now I gotta go find out what that stands for. That was my joke question.
No, so, sorry.
Not for the real questions. Do we, how do you feel about the mix after like talking to all of them? Were we happy?
Probably I would remove, just in looking at the pay, probably remove Jonestown.
Yeah.
And probably remove BK.
BK.
BK is, is such a unique city and it, you know, they don't, yeah, they have a parks and rec department, but it's a much smaller park area they're managing and they don't have a util, you know, their, their utilities are with them.
The Galleria is completely inside BK, right?
The Galleria, yeah. And so the Galleria helped develop, like essentially that was a public-private partnership where the Galleria essentially built their city facilities. They have really nice city hall, really nice police facilities according to chief and so, yeah, they have a very, very large budget, so.
Okay.
I would say, if I was going to do this again, I would remove BK kind of as that.
No, Jonestown did have one that was higher than us, I think, even.
Just one, but Jonestown just across the board was just really
Where, where is Jonestown?
And which is, it's right north, it's just to the north of Lago Vista, so it's all along the lake area up there. And so it's, it's just amazing how close Jonestown and Lago Vista are and how very different the salaries were for those two cities.
So, maybe not toss them, but maybe just per position, if it helps in the future, it's just like, just drop the outliers.
Right.
Just say like,
Right.
this one's pretty high, this one's pretty low.
Yeah.
And, you know, there might be some good data elsewhere in there.
I'm just like you, I mean, we've always, Westlake has been in every single salary survey the city's ever done, but again, there's no comparison for Public Works. They have a, they have a wastewater, they, they have one position that does wastewater billing, but again, that is kind of like we do through TDS, it's a pass-through service, so.
The, with that, the election that they just had where there's like nine different areas that could disannex, and I think, do we know how many? I'm just saying, like, we might have more cities here, very close, or they might just stay out in the ETJ. So, anyway, the, and how long, how long have we had the, the grades?
I mean, it's, as long as I've been around, but again, it was, it was 20 grades, right? And then, I believe it was a previous city administrator working with Councilmember Rosengard and Councilmember Carmona
Yep.
to create the 11 grades as opposed to 20 or 21 grades.
Yeah. No, I, and then, what is, what is your ability to, how, how often is there like a rock star, like, city employee that's just like, oh, we can get, we can get this person, but we just have to go outside of that? Or is it just like, that's the cap? Like, like this is, this is how much we're offering, but it's it?
Well, we went outside the caps last year. We, we, the mayor and I elected not, we, we, we proposed a lot of changes to titles and to job descriptions and then there was the, both the tiered COLA that we did last year in addition to some, everyone just kind of got a little merit bump. So, that put a lot of those salaries outside that max range.
Okay, but officially
We didn't adjust the grades. We adjusted, you know, through funding, budget actions. Several, you know, jumped up above, but we didn't at the same time adjust the grades because we were considering this as well.
So, so I knew this was, I knew this needed to be addressed. And what some, what a lot of cities have done is, you know, you'll, we did the research and they were like, okay, yeah, we got, they did a COLA, but then as a part of that COLA, they also have to do a, adjust the, the grades, right? So you have to almost do that every time. And I mean, it could be mathematically done, but again, I think it gives us more flexibility if we create a range per position, because again, trying to match all of these positions in a grade, I mean, a
Yeah, flexibility is
Yeah, across the different departments, I mean, you're, you have completely different, you know, job duties and responsibilities.
And also, it must be really hard to, you know, to, to have it listed and then that someone who's vying for the similar positions, they just have to look at what you're doing and just say, just go up a little bit higher. And so last night we had public safety and chief was going through some of the, some of the changes that he wants to do for the officers to like, kind of
Yes.
like, we're stuck somewhat to these, this pay range, but here are some of the incentives. And I, I think adding more of those tools is like really helpful. So, no, I think it's great, thank you.
I saw Councilmember Rosengard had her hand raised.
I just Googled, do, do job descriptions include salary ranges? And it said, according to LinkedIn, 62% of employers include salary ranges in job ads, which is an 8.3% increase from 2022. This is due to new laws requiring pay transparency, but legal compliance isn't the only reason employers share salary information. Several states now require companies to disclose pay ranges in their job postings. So, that's good information. I also was going to say on the, if we delete the grade four and we put in the salary ranges, we also want to make sure that they're not tied to someone else's. You had, you and I had talked about this where, like for instance, right now, the Public Works Director and the chief are in the same grade, so each one would be individual.
Correct. They would have, each position would have a range. It's not tied to, we're probably going to utilize the existing pay grades to give us a, you know, an example, but we're also going to look at the other cities, you know, data to just try to establish those ranges and, because then you can really think about what is the position, what is their, what are their responsibilities and what is an appropriate pay range? I think one thing that, again, the pay grades, especially the grades we currently don't have into account, or the grade that we, the grades that we currently have don't take into account like seniority, you know, like someone that's been in the position a long time
Of course.
that's been receiving COLAs or, you know, merit increases over time. That's why sometimes you need to build in a larger range because you need to have a large range because you may, as, you know, you get a, a new person coming in, they may not have a lot of experience, or you may have someone that's an incumbent that's been in the position a long time, so you need that flexibility of a pay range.
Councilman Akis.
Just back to BK, aren't they the only other city that has a large percentage of their budget that comes from sales tax revenue?
They are, they are the only other city, yes, so they are like us in that regard.
That's the closest city to us, I think, as far as our income, I think, how we depend on income.
I mean, how we depend on income, correct, it is.
Yeah, just wanted, just wanted to make sure. I thought I saw that.
There's two cities, right? There's, that's our, yeah, so they're really close to ours, yeah, so.
The only other close would be Buda.
Westlake.
No, BK.
No, Westlake only has 40%.
But they have a very low tax rate, just like us, they have no
Well, I was looking at what percentage of their budget comes from sales tax revenue. So, I mean, just, just for perspective that way, interesting comparison, but I'm all for flexibility. I'd rather do salary ranges than pay grades, so I'm in favor of that. In looking at, so it is really hard. There's no true match from city to city to our job descriptions. And so I think we need to really look at several of our positions in, and looking at the salary surveys and what are included in some of those as we look at those ranges because we have several positions that are, like our city secretary is, is the court clerk and is also here running the meetings. So there's more things combined in a position than what we see on the job description comparison, so I really want to take that into consideration. The administrative assistant one has HR duties, that's not in any other administrative assistant position that I saw in the comparison cities. So, I, I think we need to really take a good look at when we build these ranges, how our structure is different and thinking about what we learned from this salary survey that other cities are paying people that are doing those positions and then combine that together because I think we need to adjust those positions where they're doing multiple tasks that aren't typically in one job description. We have a tendency to do that, you know? We had our city secretary who was our finance director for, I don't know, 30 years or whatever, but I think it's time for us to really look at that when we're considering how we set the ranges. So I think that's really important. And, yeah, the combined jobs and then consideration for the competency-based salary structure. You know, thinking, thinking in terms of what experience does someone bring to our community, what competencies do they have? So all those things, I think we need that flexibility for. Anyway, that's kind of what my thoughts are.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think that, that just brings something, a note that probably we want to discuss a little bit is that these ranges, we might want to keep them independent of incentives such as like bilingual incentives or things like that, so it's, it's kind of clear that these ranges are just for
Just for base salary.
Base salary and then those incentives would be potential ways to
And I do think that, rather than, another suggestion is, rather than, in, maybe in the next year or two, rather than doing another salary survey but doing a salary, oh, sorry, excuse me, doing a benefits and other compensation survey, we will be getting, you know, new we will be getting, you know, new medical insurance rates, that, you know, they're gonna go up. So, I think, once we have the new benefits in place, it would be a good time to look at those benefits. What do other cities offer? And as the mayor said, those other compensation, or other compensation items. So, we give incentives for education, for bilingual, for certifications. So, look, looking at that.
The big picture.
Yeah. But because we, originally, I had intended to look at salary and benefits, but that's, that's a lot. So, we scaled it back to just salary.
We, we typically have alternated those recently, at least.
We have, yeah. I believe in twenty-nineteen, or twenty-eighteen, there was like kind of a, a both salary and benefits, but I've seen it in the past where it's just salary or just, just benefits.
Additional questions on the information presented by staff? Councilor Madikis.
So, what are the next steps in really looking at the ranges for the positions, especially the ones that have combined tasks?
Yeah, so I, I mean, my intention is to work with staff on taking the, both the feedback from tonight's session, but also from the survey and starting to craft what those proposed pay ranges would be, and then bringing that back to council as part of the budget process to not necessarily make adjustments, right? To, you know, other than what Matt was referencing where we might have money set aside for COLA or for merit, but really, at the same time, adopting those pay ranges per position. And I'm happy to provide previews of that before it gets, you know, all the way in the process, the council getting their feedback, especially those council members that wanna work directly on that like we've had before when Councilmember Rosengard and other council members were participating in that. So, that's something that, if, if somebody wants to assist with that, I think it would be welcome, right? You know, just in terms of giving their guidance and feedback so that it's more easily, you know, something that council would, would be considering as part of the adoption process. But the, the intention is, we wanna make these changes as part of the next budget cycle, which would include, you know, the additional or the usual, you know, salary adjustments for COLA and merit, right? Any other questions? All right, so this is a discussion item only. We will be bringing this back, like I said, as part of the budget cycle, but also sharing information with council as we develop this. And I appreciate everybody's, you know, work on this, especially the staff work that I know Barbara spent a lot of time, you know, working on this, and Matt and Kyle, of course, were doing the review as well. But it's, it's very helpful to get these comparisons so that we make sure that we are retaining the best staff that we, we can. All right, council. So, we don't have any other agenda items, so Councilmember Madikis.
Motion to adjourn.
Second from Mayor Breton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say nay. All right, we adjourned at seven fifty-two PM.
Just happened, that's just.